Okay, good evening at 6:00 PM, February 9th, 2022. And I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Like to announce that this is a live meeting as well as a virtual remote meeting being televised live on local channel 18. And I want to thank everybody ahead of time for their patience as we continue to get used to another different format. Okay, there's a change in the call-in number because we're on a split room today. So if abutters want to call in, the phone number is (508) 539-1449. Okay, and we're going to insist on a one-minute time limit for abutter remote discussions because there's only a couple of phone lines of people to call in on on hold. And this is kind of par for the course to limit the time, par for the course for all of the towns on the Cape, I understand. Okay, a couple of things to help the meeting go a little smoother. It's always best to raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized to speak. And when you're not speaking, if you mute your phone, that will cut down on the background noise. Okay, for all of us at Town Hall, if we could rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so Ron, Scott, and Bob are absent tonight. And Bill Blaisdell and Jim Gould are joining us remotely via Zoom. The rest of the board of staff are here at Town Hall. So sitting on the first hearing tonight, it's going to be myself, Bill, and Jim, as well as Charlie and Brad. So Sharon, would you read the first new hearing, please?
Thirty Sand Dollar Lane, owners Jody and Alexander Sines request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a three-bedroom, single-family residence with a new three-bedroom residence on a property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 84, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from January 12th, 2022 hearing at the request of the attorney.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Crane. And I have the pleasure of representing the Sines in connection with this permit application, as you are well aware. We were here back in January, and there was one issue that was brought up at that time, which is really the only issue that that I'll discuss tonight. There's no point in rehashing what I've went over relative to the building the last time. And that is that there was an issue raised as to whether or not this building constituted a three-story structure. It met the 35-foot height requirement, but there was a question raised relative to the third story. There was also a question raised relative to bringing in fill and things of that nature so that the basement would not be considered a story. But after that hearing, I believe Kevin Dauphine met with Dave Morris, the building commissioner, and discussed modifications to the plan, which would actually transform what was previously, what we previously referred to as the second floor, to a half-story. And the plans that you have before you this evening demonstrate, both the floor plans and the design plans demonstrate how that occurred. The board may recall that the entire second floor was on the plans that were submitted in January. You can see that that second floor has been cut back, leaving only the interior space as the half-story space qualifying under the provision of the bylaw as a half-story. From a site perspective, the only other change, well, there are a couple of changes. One, obviously, there was no need for a lot of the walls that were shown on the plan because, given this scenario, we didn't have to worry about the basement. We are considering it a story, so we didn't have to bring in fill to try to argue that it was a half-story. And also, the garage structure that was in front of this building between the home and Sand Dollar Lane is now attached to the building. It is not, well, it was attached before via a pergola, but now it is actually attached right up to the side of the building. The pergola, the pergola is gone. So we believe that we demonstrated the last time that a lot of the setback criteria were being improved, some improved dramatically, some only with slight improvement. But I suggest to the board now that we have a two-and-a-half-story building as opposed to a three-story building, and that the board would be well within its jurisdiction and discretion to make the determination that what is being proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. And beyond that, I really don't have a heck of a lot to say. Kevin Dauphine is here, as is Andrew Garrelly. Andrew did the landscaping plans that I've also submitted to the board demonstrating the landscaping that has been proposed in connection with the project and which was also part of the conservation commission approvals. And I believe that we've also addressed concerns that Glenn had raised relative to the septic. I think part of that has been resolved by virtue of the fact that the garage has been moved close right up to the building as opposed to where it was situated before. And I think you may have received comments from Glenn in that regard. So with that, I will keep it short and brief before I lose the rest of my voice, and we'll try to respond to any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at this, and I'm not sure what the definition of a half-story is, but it doesn't look like a half-story. Maybe somebody could help me out here with the actual definition of a half-story. Because I'm looking at, it looks like a full room, and then there's a roof on top of it. So I'm probably not the guy to answer that question. Maybe somebody else here could tell me what a half-story is.
Well, I think the plan that we devised is a plan that results from a meeting that Kevin had with David. And I believe that based upon knee walls and things of that nature, based upon the square footage of that floor above the floor below it, I think it qualifies. And David is probably the best person to really address that.
I could address that. The definition of a half sto, I, first of all, let me talk about this project. When this first came to me, it had retaining walls all around the whole house. They were probably eight feet tall. And I think it doesn't look like there's many changes other than just right on the top floor, but there's been a lot of changes here since the last time we've been here. And if you look at just at that south elevation we're looking at right now, the only thing that, the only retaining wall is for the parking of a car. And it's at a reasonable height, it's into the embankment, which is what I believe how the bylaws and talk about retaining walls, embankment tank walls they use. So I think this has come very far, and it looks fantastic to me. I really like the design of the house. Now, you look at that side wall, that's all foundation, that is not, there's not one retaining wall there until you get past there where they have to fill up to get above the floodplain and get to the flood design level. So that's fantastic. That's good for the town, as we've already talked about. It's good for the, good for the neighborhood. It's good for, it's good for everybody involved. It's good for homeowners. So now we get the sec, it's been conceded, the first floor is based in the basement. You can call that the first floor now because that's above the design level. So we've got, so that works out great. Second floor is there, the third floor. Now, that's the question before the board. Is this a true half-story above grade? Okay, so if we get, we have come to the definition of the half-story, basically saying it's, it's a, it's beneath the sloped roof, which this is gambrel. A gambrel is a slope roof. Any roof is a slope roof. But, but the only, the thing is, it does not exceed two-thirds of the floor area story, of the story immediately below that. So I believe they have that. You're, you're talking about 55%. So we're at 55%. So the other, the last, the last thing is what the board has to decide is, any exterior wall of said half-story shall be stepped back a minimum of two feet from the wall plane of the story immediate, immediately below it.
In other words, it's got to step in towards the center of the house?
Right.
Two feet at a minimum?
That's where we are. That's where we are. We have to.
So it's got to go in two feet in a minute?
Right. So we, what we have here, if you look at this side here, they are lined up, and we understand that. But it's, whether, the question is whether the board accepts that the roof there that divides it would be allowable. So it's actually in two areas where law, on the other side, it's very, very small area. I suppose the question is, is that considered a dormer or a wall, or a straight wall?
Well, I'm looking at the west elevation. That's on the last page here. And I look at the right side, and it looks like it goes straight up all the way.
It does.
So look for the west elevation.
And same thing on the east elevation as well, John.
See the west elevation on the right side of that? Nope. Over to the right. Yep. That wall on the far right, it looks like it's straight all the way up. It doesn't look like it's stepped in. Maybe I'm missing something.
I think the roof gives it an optical illusion that it's stepped in, but it's not stepped in. Because if you overlay the floor plans, it's right on.
Well, I think that's what they want to, they want to determine, does that roof constitute a two-foot setback? I think that's what they're looking for, is that?
The roof sticks out from the wall, so that this is right against the wall.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you.
Technically, it would have to be set back.
So is it a half-story or is it not?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't fit that criteria of the, of the, um.
What I think this was originally written for was typically when a town calls for two-and-a-half stories, they call them for two stories in the roofed area, then that would be the half-story they occupy. But it's not, it allows for this exterior wall sentence, which probably should have meant interior, and they wrote it wrong. And so when you have a gambrel, you'd have a two-foot wall, it would be back two feet. And so if this was a gambrel, it would work better because you'd have your wall back the two feet, whereas.
So if you looked at the interior, could you tell if it's a half-story?
It doesn't meet the setback of two feet, so it doesn't meet the bylaw, it's a half-story.
So you consider this a full story?
Yes, the way the walls are now.
I think, I would agree, I would agree. I mean, I think that if they, if those had stepped back, then they would become a true dormer. That's all you, you're there.
Well, isn't this the roof line out here, so the interior is setback?
See, that's, yeah. That is setback, that's setback. Part to the very left.
And that's setback here as well, is it not?
If you measure the width of the walls, wall to wall, they're identical, so they're right on top of each other.
Well, there's a section here that basically.
That little spot.
These certainly are setback, are they not?
They're setback from the edge of the roof that hangs, that hangs out, but they're not setback from the wall. The way the bylaw reads is it's a two, a minimum of two feet from the wall plane of the story, not two feet from your gutter. It's, it's right in the bylaw. I mean, it's pretty clear.
So then you're telling me that you can have, that you can have the wall come right out to the edge of the building so that it goes straight up, and all you have to do is have a knee wall and move that knee wall in two feet from the wall? So it doesn't have to be, it can go straight up and down on the outside of the building?
No.
Well, what do you, I'm confused.
Well, what is, any?
When you're coming up with your floors, you're coming up with your second-story wall, if you're going to have vertical walls, they have to be set back two feet. That's the way the bylaw reads.
The interior wall?
No, it says exterior.
The exterior wall.
I think the intent might have been interior because you could do it for gambrel, you'd come back two feet. And I think the intent of a half-story is a roofed area. Because that's the way it's interpreted in most towns.
So then the interior, the interior doesn't have to be set back at all? It doesn't have to have a knee wall in the interior space? As long as the, as long as the?
No, it does not have.
As long as the outside, as long as the outside wall is moved in two feet from the end of the roof? Or from the end of the wall?
Yeah, from the end of the plane of the wall.
We have a comment here?
Yes.
Grab the mic if you wouldn't. Again, your name for the record.
Sure.
Unless you ask for a variance for it.
Kevin Dauphine from Sandbox Design Studio. So I agree that the dormer walls on the second floor or the half-story level are actually in line with the story below it. When Mr. Morris and I spoke, we did speak about that in particular, and we believe that the intent of the bylaw is to decrease the appearance of the volume of that half story relative to the story below it. So with a gambrel roof, because of the steepness of the pitch and the fact that we are actually running the roof line across so that you don't see visually the first and second floor connecting, we are actually decreasing the appearance of the volume of that upper story. So that was the intent that we understood mutually as we read through that bylaw. Because if you take the bylaw literally, very few homes, even a two-and-a-half-story capes, cape-style home wouldn't be allowable because the gable ends typically are continuous. Even if you step the dormer walls back in, the bylaw doesn't make provision for, well, you can use the gable ends as an exception to that. So even a cape-style home wouldn't meet the criteria of the bylaw. So we felt that some interpretation had to be made about what the bylaw, the intent of the bylaw was. So again, at the end of that meeting, I think we felt pretty positive about this actually truly being a half-story. And just for reference, if the board would please, I could show the previous elevation and how long it was and how we've actually reduced it in terms of volume.
Okay.
And part of the reasoning for that, too, was we're trying to be sensitive to the neighbors who aren't actually here tonight, but.
They're on the phone.
Okay. Using the same elevation, so this is the previous design.
Yeah, grab the mic if you would. I'll bring it closer to him, Kevin, if you would.
Thank you. So you can see that the, the upper story in the previous plan pretty much went the extent of the story beneath it.
Entire way?
The entire way.
Left to right?
Exactly.
Got it.
So if you look at the proposed plan, I mean, we're almost 50% in length, even though we're allowed to go two-thirds or 66% of the length. So we're trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood by constricting the view angle, if you will, of the second floor, but using the roof line to break up the volume of that, that story so that we can align the dormer walls with the wall below it. So I would suggest if the board is going to ask us to pull the dormer walls back two feet, we're going to make the building longer to get essentially the space that we want on that upper level, which I think would be a disadvantage to the abutters.
Excuse me. I've been raising my hand. There are two members that are going to vote on this tonight, and you have not shared these documents with us, so we have no idea what you guys are looking at.
Okay.
We're going to put it up. Sorry, Bill.
Thank you.
Hang on.
Sharon's got to put it on the screen.
And I don't think this bylaw was really, but it had more thought into it.
It's really rigid if you read it literally.
And it's, Dave really is, he's the guy you got to.
Well, it's, it's up to the board.
Yeah. But it's weird the way it's written.
It's up to the board. I understand what it says is basically they should have these walls lined up, they have to be into, so even on a cape, which would be.
I'm not sharing, right?
A half-story because I, you know.
The gable ends would align. You never step the gable ends back.
You can argue this, it can be interpreted, I get that.
Yeah.
Seeing it now, Bill?
But structurally, it's.
Yes, thank you.
Good way to do it, you know?
This is a better way to do it structurally, no question.
I'm looking at the right-hand side of the west elevation, Bill.
Yep.
And you can see how it goes. At least it appears to be straight all the way.
It is.
So that's been the discussion point.
Yep.
So I guess the bylaw is a little ambiguous, so I'm not sure exactly where to go on this.
Can I ask a question? The, one of the criteria is that, that aspect on top would be no more than two-thirds in floor size of what is below it.
Correct.
And we all kind of agree that what you've proposed and what you've done is more than complied with that.
Correct.
The other aspect, as I understand it, is that the bylaw says that there's a two-foot inside wall setback from the top to the bottom. So whatever the wall is, it says outside, doesn't it?
It says exterior, but I think it was probably intended to be interior.
Okay, thanks.
I can read the whole thing for you. It does mention the interior. The interior, basically, it starts, the floor area starts at a four-foot wall. All right, that's, so we got that. The interior is, is, so let me skip all that and just read the last line. The last line verbatim, "Any exterior wall of said half-story shall be stepped back a minimum of two feet from the wall plane of the story immediately below it. And the total horizontal dimension of said exterior walls shall not exceed two-thirds of the story immediately below it."
Okay.
So the horizontal dimensions shall not exceed two-thirds.
So we meet that criteria.
We are there.
Yeah.
Probably, I don't know what the length of that.
With that criteria, so the two-thirds is actually relative to two separate areas. It's the overall length of the half-story, if you were, relative to the story below it. So we're like 55% on that, so we're well in compliance.
Yeah.
It's also the floor area of that half-story cannot be more than two-thirds of the floor area below it. And we're also about 55% of that, so we comply on that as well. The only area that, again, that there's ambiguity is that two-foot offset. And again, it, you know, as a designer of houses, it would be extremely difficult to design a house to meet that criteria on all four sides of the project. Again, a cape-style house wouldn't meet that criteria. So to do anything with, you know, a shingle-style house, for example, would not be allowed anywhere in, in the town of Mashpee.
So how do I read this, Mr. Chairman? The way I interpret it, and you, and the board can interpret any way they want, but it says, "The total horizontal dimension of said exterior walls should not exceed two-thirds of that underneath." So in other words, if you had a cape where it had a roof on the front and a roof on the back, half of that, half, you know, it can't be, you can't have exterior walls three sides of a cape. That would be more than two-thirds. That would be three-quarters. So you'd have to step them back two feet and make the roof line there.
In other words?
So I think this does conform.
That was the intent of the bylaw? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't I read what Evan had to say on this, and we'll go from there. Chris already talked about his thoughts on it, and Evan, and this is from the town planner, Evan Lyra, and the date was February 8th at 2:57 PM. And it was to Dave, Chris, and myself. And Evan's comment is, I'm with Chris on this one. It appears as though, based on at least the elevations, I see that the basement floor would constitute one story as defined in the zoning bylaw, which led me to see whether or not the third floor meets the definition of a half-story, which it does not seem to. So that's what Evan says. And let me go back, and I'll quote Chris on this. And this was at 2:49 on the 8th, 2:49 PM. John, based on the definition of a half-story, the square feet of the half-story can be no more than two-thirds of the floor below it, and the exterior walls have to be stepped back at least two feet from the exterior walls of the floor below it. It looks like it may meet two-thirds, although the square footage isn't listed. It does not meet the vertical wall being stepped back two feet from the floor below it. Therefore, the proposed house does not meet the criteria of a half-story for its top floor, and by definition is three stories. So I'm not sure whether your, Chris, your thoughts have changed on that, but this was as of the 8th.
I mean, rethinking it, you'd have a lot of houses in town that would be noncompliant. I think that word, I looked up the town meeting when they did this article, and it is as written. But I think the intent was the interior wall, because if you have an interior square footage two-thirds, you're going to have interior walls two-thirds. And it wouldn't make sense because every gable end on a house would have to come in. So if you were doing a roof and calling that your half-story, which is typically what a half-story is, the roof area, if you're doing your half-story and finishing off that top area, which a lot of people do now just to get the square footage, that would mean both the gable ends on the house, if it had, you know, a cape-style roof, would have to pull in. And that structurally, it doesn't make sense to not stack the walls.
No.
Why would you put them on the, you'd put them on the inside? I mean, could, it makes, it would work, but I mean, it would look pretty stupid.
So you think the bylaw's a little ambiguous on that part?
After looking at it, yeah, I think there could be some leeway. And in the end, it's, you know, Dave's a zoning enforcement officer, so I'll lay it on him.
The way I look at it, what I'm reading here, "The total horizontal dimension of said exterior wall should not exceed two-thirds of that of the immediate story." So say you have a house 25 by 25, so you have 100 feet of wall on the story below. If you cover that with 60% up top, it meets that criteria. If it's directly above, roof line beyond the rest of it.
Okay. So you're in agreement with Dave, excuse me, with Chris, that it's a half-story?
I believe it is.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I really, I've been listening to this whole thing, and I've been looking at this. It doesn't make any sense for the outside wall. I think the real intent of the bylaw is to make sure it's, the two-thirds is the real key to that bylaw, that it doesn't exceed two-thirds of the floor below it. And this clearly does not. It's at 55%. They could go up as high as 66.6%. So I think they've met the intent of that bylaw.
Thank you. Jim, any comments, questions, concerns?
No.
Okay, let me kind of go around the room. Brad, any questions?
No.
George?
No.
Charlie?
Just one comment. You know, the two-thirds is either it does or it doesn't. That's easy. The other, I think, you can't get into the mind of who wrote the bylaw, but that deals with appearance, I think. And, you know, looking at the appearance of what has been done to make this something that can be presented to us, I'm not bothered by it. So I, I don't have anything other than that.
Sharon, any comments on this? What do you think?
Well, I'm thinking of my own house.
Grab the mic.
I'm building a cape, and the gables are two feet in from the pitch, so.
Only on the side.
In other words, the gables are the ends, is that correct?
So the pitch is like this.
Yeah.
And then the gables go in like that.
I think you mean the dormers.
Oh, the dormers.
The gamers, the gables are the triangles at the end. It'd be unlikely that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, the dormers.
Yes.
That's entirely different, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, they indent two feet in on both sides, so.
Tightly different.
Yeah, okay. I, just like I said, I'm thinking of my own, I'm trying to understand it and wrap my head around the whole thing.
All right. What other questions do we have on this project, other than the two-and-a-half stories? Was there anything?
There was building height, which changed on the plan three times. I went out and did some measurements myself, and it was close, but if you're only going 34 feet, you're within it.
Yep, we're in compliance there.
Okay, so you went out there, and it's in fact compliant?
It's, my measurements added a little lower, but, um, they're only proposing 34 feet. So as long as they stick to 34 feet as presented on the plan, they're within.
And I can, uh, I'll, I'll require, um, that they submit, um, or even a board could, even if they wanted to approve that, that they submit documentation on the building height uh, prior to, uh, approval of the frame.
Yep.
All right, before I get to the phone calls, um, I think we have some.
I have Board of Health.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah. 30 Sand Dollar Lane, dated February 9th, 2022, Board of Health. "The proposed septic plan has been submitted and are in the process of being reviewed and approved by the Board of Health. The proposed septic system has been revised to include denitrification in the form of a singular model 960. The existing dwelling is approved for three bedrooms. The proposed floor plan depicts three bedrooms. The demolition of the existing structure requires a rodent inspection to be performed by a Board of Health agent and an asbestos inspection performed by a mass-licensed asbestos inspector prior to the approval of demo permit by the Board of Health. The disposal works construction permit must be obtained prior to the building permit approval by the Board of Health. I have conservation, dated February 3rd. 30 Sand Dollar Lane Commission has approved this project."
Okay. Well, we have a letter from Tony and Ellen Hudon. And I believe that they are on the line. So rather than read it, why don't I turn it over to, I believe it's Ellen? So Ellen, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I didn't know if you wanted me to read what I wrote, just so, um, everyone understands what our opposition was about.
Go ahead.
Okay. "We own the property at 26 Sand Dollar Lane and oppose the current house plan submitted in the special permit application for raise and replace of 30 Sand Dollar Lane. The proposed house plan would be detrimental to our neighborhood with a necessary fill requirement and the increased height, height of both the house and garage. It will significantly taller than the current structures and will tower over the modest neighboring homes. We will personally be impacted by this increased height and our current view of Oakway Bay. The loss of our water view will have a negative impact on both our quality of life and property value. We have been in constant contact with the Peninsula Council ARC since September 2021, asking for assurance that the ARC guidelines will be enforced in this book. The proposed plan is in direct violation of numerous ARC guidelines. To quote just a few, page one of the ARC guidelines, "The homeowners of New Seabury are bound by covenants. The goal of the ARC is to enforce the guidelines and specifications for New Seabury so that the whole community can benefit through the maintenance of ARC property value and an enjoyable, safe, and stress-free lifestyle." Page 11, Section A, "Care down for new construction near the existing home in a space at lots shall not alter the blue lines of the abutment." Section B, Style, "In short, houses should appear to be small-scale, even if large, and blend into the landscape as much as possible. The ARC, along with the homeowners and builder, are choosing to ignore the guidelines. We feel this is a breach of contract. We oppose this project with the current house plan and ask that you not issue the special permit. It will be detrimental to our neighborhood and affect our families' enjoyment of our home and significantly decrease our property value. Thank you for your time and consideration, Tony and Ellen Hudon, 26 Sand Dollar Lane."
Okay. Well, let me first start by saying the reason why 30 Sand Dollar Lane is coming to the zoning board is because this particular piece of property falls outside of the New Seabury special permit area. So we're actually the ones that are responsible to make sure that the town bylaws, uh, get enforced on any property going, uh, to be built. So that's why, that's why they're here. Uh, properties that are covered under the New Seabury special permit don't come to the zoning board. And please correct me if I'm wrong on this. Maybe Kevin, you'd like to jump in on that?
Uh, a lot of it, a lot of what's provided for on the special permit freezes the zoning as of the time that the New Seabury special permit was approved. So it would be zoning that was in effect back in the 70s, I believe, when that special permit was approved. So a lot of the bylaws that have been adopted and have established dimensional requirements, uh, since then, wouldn't apply to a project that was within the special permit area, because that special permit, every, that special permit specifically set forth what the setback criterias were and things of that nature.
Right. And could you review for Ellen the, uh, loss of water view?
Well, water view is not a proper consideration under the zoning bylaw. Uh, the architectural review or ARC is a private restrictions that don't have anything to do with the issues relative to zoning. Uh, and if I'm not mistaken, and I don't believe the Hudons are immediate or director brothers, I think they're one or two house lots beyond the director brother. Uh, and, uh, I believe that, uh, that the plan that has been presented, pursuant to the comments that were made the first time around, uh, reduces that, that, that second floor, or what we had referred to as the second floor, uh, by almost 50%. Uh, and I can't tell specifically, uh, where their view corridor is, that they're not really entitled to under zoning. Uh, but I suspect that the, that the reduction in the width of that, uh, story, uh, would have less of an impact, uh, on anybody that was concerned about a view than, uh, than what was previously proposed.
Yeah. Ellen, unfortunately, your view of the water is not covered under any zoning bylaws. It's not protected. So there's not, there's nothing we can do about that.
It's protected by the covenant of the ARC. Right. And they are, the homeowners are members of the, the community. They are, um, homeowners of the Peninsula Council and should be. And it states clearly that the homeowners should be, um, should not ignore bylaws, should, I mean, guidelines. They should be set to, uh, follow the guidelines, as all the rest of the homeowners are.
If I'm not mistaken, we did provide the board with an approval of ARC, uh, the last time we were here.
Yeah, I believe the ARC approved it. And honestly, the ARC has, uh, nothing to do with the zoning board.
We understand that, yeah. We, we certainly understand that.
Which begs the question, why do they feel necessary to give you a special permit in the first place if they're not part of this?
Right.
We didn't ask for it.
Right, so that kind of lends itself to what might be going on here.
We did not ask for it. We don't require anything from the ARC.
Excuse me, we, we missed that.
Yeah. We don't require any paperwork whatsoever from the ARC. Has nothing to do with this town board.
Correct. We, we do know that it's more when it comes to a building permit. Now, are you saying that this home is, does not have to get ARC approval for a building permit, Ethan?
Uh, I would guess they don't. They don't fall under the special permit.
The first special permit only applied itself as a cluster zoning special permit to New Seabury.
Right.
It has nothing to do with it being anything else. Just because they're not in a clu, we're not in a cluster zoning special permit area, doesn't mean they get to violate the coven to the ARC.
That is just our, that's our opinion, you know, we're.
Those are private restrictions.
It's in contract.
As Attorney Corrine says, these are private restrictions, nothing to do really with this board.
Okay.
So you're really, I, I, I see what you're saying. Your fight is really with the ARC.
The nature of the size of the buildings and how it affects the neighborhood.
Right.
Your fight is with the ARC.
Well, but you wouldn't, so we ask the board to consider our, this is much larger house than is currently there, and it will be towering over neighboring homes. Um, it's detrimental.
It's detrimental to the neighborhood because it devalues the property around it.
Okay.
Right. In particular ours.
Well, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Uh, unfortunately, they are within the, uh, bylaw requirements. Whether or not, um, that helps or hurts you, uh, I'm, I'm sorry if it does hurt you, but they're within, uh, their rights.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for calling. Okay, do we have anybody else? Anybody else on hold that would like to speak? Okay, Bill, any final comments before we go for a vote?
No, it, I just want to make sure, who's making the motion? Charlie?
Yep.
You, you know that, what to put in there?
I do, I think.
Okay, good.
Okay.
If you, if you need any help, I'll try and chip in.
You, you correct me, please, Bill, okay?
No problem.
Okay. So before we vote, we'll have a little pow-wow-ing. Make sure we have everything on there.
He's got written notes, Bill, I see.
Jim, any final comments?
No, it seems that whatever we do, uh, may go to court anyway. So, um, you know, we just have to follow the bylaws. Yep.
Okay. Uh, Brad, anything?
No.
Uh, George? Charlie?
No.
No.
Sharon? How about Dave or Chris?
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't know, man. I, I keep on looking at this. This is, this is a tough bylaw to, um, to interpret. I mean, because it says it shall be stepped back a minimum, minimum of two feet and the total dimension shall be, be less than two, two-thirds, so.
Chris, I, I, I think we need to go on what we think the intent of the bylaw.
Structurally, that doesn't work.
It's, it's, it's a better job structurally to, um, to have it, to, you know, I understand that too. But, you know, it's.
Are you comfortable if we vote on this, or would you rather?
I'm comfortable for, for you to vote on it, sure.
I'm sorry?
I'm comfortable for you to vote on it, sure.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I'm comfortable. I mean, literal interpretation doesn't make sense, I think. It wasn't, I don't think, like Bill said, I don't think it's the intent.
Well, that's something we can talk about afterwards, off the record. Uh, seeing as there's nothing else, Charlie, would you like to make a motion?
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make a motion relative to 30 Sand Dollar Lane. Owners Judy and Alexandra Sims request a special permit under Section 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a three-bedroom, single-family residence with a new three-bedroom residence on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 84, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. Motion, one. "The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General laws 48, Section 9. Two, plot plan prepared by BSS Design House Reconstruction 30 Sand Dollar Lane, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Jody and Alexandra Sims. Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, date October 14th, 2021. Drawn by EJP AR, checked by TB, job number 17170. Revisions added setbacks to existing retaining walls 11121. TB, added sheet four, February 3rd, 2022. AR, titled, 'Exist conditions and demolition sheet 104, drawing number B25-87, signed and stamped by Thomas J. Bunker, professional land surveyor.' Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to conservation comments dated February 3rd, 2022, and Board of Health comments dated February 9th, 2022, and any and all conditions included in the Board of Health comments relative to what needs to be done in the future. Condition that any changes to the plans submitted thus far will require the applicant to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals." I think that takes care of it. Bill, sound okay?
You, you got it all, Charlie. Good job.
Okay.
Last job, Bill.
There you go. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Jim, I think Sharon beat you, but.
I actually can't vote, so.
You can't vote, so Jim's in for the second. So let's do a roll call. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Well done, nice project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Really nice design.
Turned out well.
Good presentation.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything to sign?
Can I, can I ask a question? I, I voted on this, but I'm not there to sign. Come to town hall?
No.
No, I, actually, I, I can sign for everybody later. Do you want to sign these now? All right, if you could just pass the papers in, that would help. All right. Let's get the big plans.
The big ones.
The big plans is what we really want. Who's the next plot?
This has a base.
Right here?
Sharon, can you not share any more of that plan?
Oh, yep, I cannot share anymore. Yep, there you go. You gotta remind me, I'm not sharing anymore.
We're all the poor for that.
There's a big man over there.
Okay, so let's see. So Brad, I'm gonna take you out on this next one. And I'm going to put, uh, George in on this next one. So George is going to take Brad's place. All right. So Sharon, would you read the next two? I actually continued hearing.
18 Wilson Grove. Owners Laurie and Joseph Baniselli. Request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-story, three-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a new, non-conforming, code-compliant, three-bedroom home on property located in the Pompan asset overlay district, R3 zoning district. Map one eighteen, parcel seventy-two, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, hearing at the request of the attorney. Eighteen Wilson Grove. Owners Laurie and Joseph Mansinelli request a variance under one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to vary the height requirement to allow for the raise and replace of a single-family residence on property located in the Pompan asset overlay district and R-three zoning district. Map one eighteen, parcel seventy-two, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, hearing at the request of the attorney.
Hi.
Good evening, I submitted a second letter requesting this matter be continued until the twenty-third of February.
That's some.
Do we have it?
I do.
I have misplaced it with all those papers.
It's dated February eighth, and it's addressed to Chairman Furbush in regards to eighteen Wilson Grove, Joseph and Laurie and Maniselli. As you know, I represent the owners of the property referenced above. At the public hearing on Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, I requested that the hearing be continued to February ninth to afford the applicant's additional time to address the items raised by the board. I have been advised that additional time will be needed to revise the plans, and therefore I request that the hearing be postponed further to February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Kevin M. Corrine.
Okay, Charlie, would you like to make a motion to accept that continuance?
Yeah, I move that.
Can I make a comment first?
Sure.
I just want to ask Mary Ann, we're not going to go beyond the date that we need to do something, are we?
No, because the hearing was opened and refined.
Okay, just want to make sure we don't make that mistake.
No, we did.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, if you would.
Okay, relative to eighteen Wilson's Grove, a motion to continue the date of the hearing to February twenty-third at the request of Attorney Corrine.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, George seconds. So let's start, Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, before we move on, we did receive an email regarding eighteen Wilson's Grove. Do you have that?
Oh, I do have, no, that's the continuance.
All right, so let me read it then.
I don't have that.
Yeah, this is a little concerning and it really has nothing to do with the project. But I'll read it anyway, and I hope we all listen to what this says and act accordingly. All right, so this is dated Thursday. Be with me here. I just want to get the dates here. Okay, it's dated Thursday, January twenty-seventh at three forty-three P.M. And it's from Peg Ferrara, I believe. And it says, hello, Zoning Board of Appeals. Peg Ferrara has sent you a message via your contact form at the town of Mashpee. And it goes on to say, my husband and I own a home at sixteen Wilson's Grove. We livestreamed with interest the zoning board meeting of January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two concerning a variance request for eighteen Wilson's Grove. I'm appalled when near the end of the meeting, one member of the board made several disparaging remarks about Wilson's Grove. It was unnecessary, demeaning, and so unprofessional. This note is not meant to be added as a comment regarding the variance request. It is meant to ask that our town officials remain respectful of all citizens. I'd like this note passed on to the zoning board with an acknowledgement that has been received and read. Thank you, Peg Ferrara. So I'm not sure when this happened, who said it, it doesn't really matter. Let's all make sure that before we say something that we'll regret later, that we stop and think about it and, you know, there's no need for something like that. So that's enough said on that, and.
John, before you move on, do you know what the comment was, or do you have any idea what it was?
What I read is all I know.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on. Okay, Sharon, would you, actually, on this next one, I'm going to have Sharon step in for George. Okay, so it's going to be Sharon, myself, Jim, Charlie, and Bill on this one. So Sharon, would you read the last continued hearing?
Fifty-four Bayberry Drive. Petitioners Mark Culhane request a variance from the front and side yard setbacks under one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition extension to an existing three-bedroom dwelling on property located in an R-five zoning district. Map twenty-three, parcel two oh two, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Thora J. Cristo. Applicant requests a continuance until February twenty-third, twenty-two hearing. I have a letter. It's dated Thursday, February third, and it says, Mary Ann, could you please continue our hearing to the next available date? We have not gotten the plans completed, adjusted yet. I hoped we would have them, but I don't and don't want to mess up you or the board up. All the best, Mark Culhane.
Okay. Charlie, would you like to make a motion on this to accept that?
Yep. Relative to fifty-four Bayberry Drive, motion is to accept the petitioner's request to continue the hearing date to February twenty-third, two thousand twenty.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Jim seconds, so let's do a roll call. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're all set on that. So that's continued. Okay, let's see what else we have on the agenda. Oh, boy.
Oh, I know what it is.
Yeah, it's the second part of it.
Oh.
I think we missed that, that was my fault, go ahead.
Okay. Fifty-four Bayberry Drive. Petitioner Mark Culhane requests a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition extension to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on property located in an R-five zoning district. Map twenty-three, parcel two oh two, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Thora J. Cristo. Applicant requests a continuance until February twenty-third hearing.
Okay, and we've already read the letter in. Charlie, would you like to make a motion on this one?
Sure. Motion to accept the petitioner's request relative to fifty-four Bayberry Lane to continue the hearing until February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, Jim second, let's do it again. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yep.
And Sharon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're all set on that. All right, so let's see, how about other business? Charlie, would you like to make a motion on this one?
Sure, I move to approve the January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Jim actually got you on that one, Sharon, so. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand, aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. George, would you like to make a motion to close?
To make a motion, then we close this evening's zoning board of appeals hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Charlie seconds, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good job.
Stay safe.